Call this meeting of the Whittier Regional Votec School Committee to order. Could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Rossi?
Present.
Ms. Coppinger?
Here.
Ms. Delai?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Paglia?
Here.
Ms. Lowell?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Ms. True?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Slavoski?
Here.
And the Chair.
Here. Y'all please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, in two republics, over the same one nation, under the same God, in the same system, with liberty and justice for all.
Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by Whittier Tech. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chairperson who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the mass wiretap statute. First item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Apparently, there's a list. Bernie Cullen, first on the list.
Good evening. I'm Bernie Cullen from Rowley, and I'm the Rowley Rep. on the School Building Committee. I'm also the Chairman of the Rowley Water Department as well. I have a number of statements to make, and I'm going to try and be as polite as I possibly can. At the last meeting, this Whittier School Committee voted 11 to nothing to adopt and forward to DSE, a plan to allocate seats at Whittier that runs counter to the original intent of the 1967 agreement. The submitted seat allocation plan is based on the 10-year average of the share of seats filled from each community. Plan itself is not unreasonable, given the circumstances, but it is problematic at a fundamental level. If you go back and read the 1967 to 1972 discussions in the Havrel Gazette about the creation of Whittier, you will see that expectations were that each of the 11 communities would be sending a similar share of their students, a similar proportion of their students, to Whittier. That was the expectation. That expectation was the justification for the use of the relative size of the student populations in the capital cost allocation formula. That's the only justification that's possible to make. The last 50 years have shown that these expectations of having similar shares of students come from each of the communities has not been met, and not been met by a very wide margin. Consequently, the submitted seat allocation plan that you've just made exacerbates the existing inequities of the capital cost allocation formula. For example, the proposed seat allocation plan plus the existing 1967 agreement will force Newburyport to bear approximately 10.5 percent of the capital costs, of any capital costs, while limiting it to 2 percent of the seats. So again, that number is 10.5 percent, and they get 2.5, 2 percent of the seats. It will force Rowley to pay 3.7 percent of any capital costs while limiting Rowley to 2 percent. Notice the disparity between Newburyport and Rowley there. We get the same number of seats that they pay, they're on the hook for three times the amount of capital costs that we are. It will force Ipswich to pay 7.5 percent of the any capital costs while limiting it to 3 percent or 10 of the projected 340 places. There is one major beneficiary of the proposed plan. Havrel is allocated 231 seats, or 68 percent of the 340 places, while paying only 44 percent of the capital costs. These numbers, I believe, speak for themselves. I recognize that the state required Whittier to submit some kind of admissions plan on very short notice, and that 70 percent of the freshmen, this entering freshman class, comes from Havrel. So I understand that kind of dynamic. But the chosen approach illustrates why a revised Whittier agreement needs to be finalized before, before anything else is considered. No agreement on the approach, on the apportionment of seats, or any decision that has implications for major capital spending should take place until after a revised regional agreement is in place. The new DSE admissions process does allow the allocation of seats by community, but regulations as written ironically presume that such an agreement is already in place. No such agreement currently exists for Whittier. One will be needed, sooner or later. The MSBA recognized the need for a revised agreement in its December 13th letter of last year. Paragraph 6, Bullet 1. In the same letter, the MSBA suggests that any changes into the agreement must be resolved prior to the MSBA approving a recommendation for a preferred schematic design. That's kind of the next step. This makes sense for the MSBA and its own processes. It does not make sense for many of the Whittier communities. It does not make sense to even begin the design process before the nature and details of the new agreement have been agreed to by voters in each of the communities. This is again putting the cart before the horse. Political and practical realities of planning this project requires that a revised agreement needs to be in place before any of the necessary decisions as to the location, size, or function of a new or renovated building are made. It is like going house hunting before you know how much of a mortgage you are qualified for, and before your spouse has agreed to the move. You can do it, but it's like, it's a foolish waste of time, and it is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Sherri David.
Sherri David, I'm the Chairman of the Rowley Board of Selectmen, and my issue is with this proposed RAC agreement. As everybody knows, Rowley was reluctant to come to the table to discuss this at all. It was overwhelming, we voted down the first time around, but our colleagues had asked us to come to have our voices heard and to find out what the project was about because we have this combined campus, one-of-a-kind, first-of-its-kind type thing. We agreed to do that. So being part of the working group, it was decided that the working group, which is made up of one member from each town, would be the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. That's not what's happening. We're now told that there are going to be four additional members put on our committee with the ability to vote. I don't know how those people are going to be picked. It's not fair that one town gets two votes or three votes, and the rest of us get one. We're just not going to tolerate it. This is not a good start transparency-wise right out of the gate. I sent two letters to Ms. Lynch asking that this agreement not go before the board tonight so that we could be afforded the opportunity to discuss it with our boards, our town council, maybe have a public hearing on it. And, by the way, it never came back to the working group. This document was formed and it never came back to the working group, the very people that it's about. So I sent two letters asking that this did not come to the committee tonight, and yet here we are. So that was completely ignored. As far as the School Building Committee, I don't, I don't, I don't know why Frank Cousins and RORAC were assigned to be the Chair and the Co-Chair. Typically, the committee picks their own Chair and Co-Chair. I've never seen it done any other way, but yet here we are. Both have an interest in the, in the project. One's from Havrel, and the other one is a trustee for the college. Which, as a reminder, we don't have an agreement with the college. The college is not a stakeholder in this, as far as we're concerned. Our 11 communities are. Okay? We are not, again, in favor of four additional voting members being added to our working group, which is going to become this Regional Agreement Committee. That's not what we signed up for, it's not what we agreed to. We're the ones paying the bills. We're not going to have another town vote on how we're going to spend Rowley's money. We're just not going to go along with it. I don't know what's coming further, further on, if this is the way we're going to start out, but Monday night I asked my board for a motion that if in fact four people are added to the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, that they can vote, which is going to give some town somewhere, two votes or three votes, we are prepared to send a letter to the MSBA, and we will not support the project any longer. It's a shame it has to be that way, but right out of the gate, I've lost trust in the process, and it hasn't been transparent. This is not what we agreed to. Not one single town agreed to this. That document that was formed by Ms. Lynch, your attorney, AI, has not even come back for us to discuss it. I wanted the opportunity for our town council to look at it as well. We're talking big numbers here. This is now getting serious, now that we're going to be getting into these agreements. We asked for that opportunity, and we've been denied. Now we're, now we're in a situation here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Colburn.
Hi, Michael Colburn. As I spoke last time, trying to talk with all 11 region, 11 community members, you guys all talk to your own personal members. It's really difficult right now. We have a town, Rowley, the way they feel. Other towns are, you know, on guard right now, and I know you guys are too, and I, and I trust that you guys will do what's best, because I think we all have their best intentions to get a school for our kids. But this is serious money. Last project was $442 million. Towns, as we know, towns are voting down overrides right now. We have to get this right, we get a new school. And we all have to feel comfortable in this process. And as we already have one town that's not feeling comfortable, we really got to think and work together how we can make sure everyone feels comfortable, because the end result, what we all want, is the best school for our kids. We all have to trust each other, and if adding more votes and giving, the perception of giving one community more power is just going to put angst in the process, is going to make the process longer. So I hope you guys understand where, you know, Rowley's coming from, I'm coming from. I want to see a path forward, but we all have to feel comfortable in that path, not we'll have a failed project like we had last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill DeMaio.
Bill DeMaio, I'm a Selectman Chair of the Town of Newbury. Thanks a lot for what your people do as the School Committee. I made a mistake the other night. I read the Regional Agreement, and I paid particular attention to the section about amendments. And it became clear to me that when they wrote that agreement, they encouraged you to add other people for the Amendment Committee. Okay? So if you add four members, I'm okay with that, because I think the Regional Agreement says you're entitled to do that, not just School Committee people, but other people as well. Whether they can vote or not is probably the issue, I think I share with some people, for the reasons that Mike already talked about. It'd be nice if they weren't voting members. I'm not sure if they definitely have to be voting members or not, but maybe that's what you'll discuss tonight. And essentially, I think that I agree with what you did with the Building Committee. I sensed that you had to probably identify when you served up the names of the people who were on the Building Committee. You were probably under pressure to identify Chairman, Vice Chair, someone and so forth. Maybe you weren't, I'm not sure, but maybe we'll talk about that tonight, but what's done is done. As far as the R A A C, like I said, I feel really good about School Committee people being there as liaison people to report back to you, to your colleagues, but it would be nice if they weren't voting members for the reasons we've talked about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Anyone that submitted written public comment for the meeting?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. October 1st, 2025, minutes of the regular School Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Pushed by Ms. Lowell, seconded by Ms. Coppinger, I think. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Upstain.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Upstain.
And the Chair.
Yes, passes. Next item on the agenda, payment of bills, financial report, Treasurers Report for September and October. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. True, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Delai?
Just a question, I don't know if the School Business Manager wants to address about the $2.8 million unencumbered balance in fixed charges.
Kara, come on up.
I'm starting to score.
Just a question and a clarification on, on the $2.8 million unencumbered balance in fixed charges. What is...
Are you in the October one?
Yes, the, the one that was just sent to us.
Oh, okay. That is, that's mostly health insurance. The health insurance in our system does not encumber every month.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's not encumbered?
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes, passes. Communications, Student Representative Report, Richard DeChico.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and members of the School Committee. Sports. Football. The Wildcats hold a 6-2 record and are preparing for the state playoffs. Players have shown strong teamwork and the ability to finish games strongly. Both boys' and girls' cross-country teams advanced the divisional round of states in Northfield. The boys' top runner set a new Whittier record, and the girls' team placed third at the vocational championships. Girls' volleyball finished 8-11, closing the season with back-to-back wins against Georgetown and Northeast Tech. Boys' soccer ended the season 4, 3, and 11 with strong senior leadership. Girls' soccer finished the season with consistent effort and improvement throughout October. Getting into clubs and activities, student government hosted the annual pep rally, Spirit Week, and homecoming. Highlights included musical chairs, a senior tug-of-war victory, and staff raises and inflatable costumes, thanks to metal fabrication for creating an Eiffel Tower decoration for our homecoming dance. Multicultural club led the "My Name, My Identity" campaign promoting name pronunciation and respect. Members gave a presentation on K-pop's global influence and served as translators during open house. An Iraq club supported the Rotary Club diaper drive. They will attend the Veterans Breakfast on November 6th and assist the Drama Club concession stand on November 7th. National Technical Honor Society, introduction for 31 new members will be held on December 8th, bringing total membership to 64. Tutoring begins in January. Skills USA is hosting the Second Annual Veterans Breakfast on November 8th, featuring guest speaker Joe Byron from Honor Flight, New England. 12 students will attend the Fall State Leadership Conference this month. The Yearbook Club is actively collecting photos and highlights for the yearbook. The Poetry Club expanded to weekly meetings with strong student leadership and creative participation. The Environmental Club had their largest turnout yet with 15 members, working on a "Leave the Leaves" awareness campaign in a 3D winter soil ecosystem model. Over 100 members signed up for Ski Club with their three winter trips planned. Peer to Peer is running a tablet and blanket drive for the MSPCA through November. Journalism Club released the first issue of the Wildcats magazine during the open house. Next issue is coming next month. Peer Leadership assisted with school events in boosting 9th grade Spirit Week participation. Upcoming events include the parent-teacher conferences and February shop selections. The Drama Club is performing the Bench and Um, I Think the Psych Teacher Is Dead on November 7th. Whittier's first student directed one-act play. Art Club began clay and pottery projects completing first kiln firing of the year. And finally Chess Club, with over 20 members, mostly freshmen, participating in the first tournament of the year. That's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Principal Assistant Superintendent, School Happenings Report, Ms. DeLaGuenis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the committee members. I just want to say thank you for showing up, if you did, at the open house last Sunday. It was quite a success. We were thrilled to invite 7th and 8th graders, students and their families across the district. The academic displays throughout the building, they were engaging, hands-on presentations, and our vocational shop areas...
You leaving them?
The vocational shop areas truly showcased the excellence of our programs. Our visitors were delighted by delicious appetizers, crepes, desserts, and I guess the pulled pork was a big hit in the cup, made especially for event by our talented culinary students and their instructors. This was a fantastic opportunity to highlight our diverse academic and vocational offerings. Since open house, we've received 279 incoming 9th grade applications and counting to this day. I want to thank our vocational coordinators, Amanda Crosby and Paul Muscovitz, who's actually over at the YMCA, receiving a nomination for Educator of the Year Award, and our maintenance crew and the entire staff for their dedicated and diligent efforts in making that day a huge success. Usually on the internet, I get emails that aren't very positive, but I, I want to just take this time to read an email from a parent who I did ask if I could read this, and she said absolutely. She was talking about the open house and what, how she was amazed. Student tour guides and, and those in the shops were respectful, informative, and polite. Staff were warm and welcoming and filled with pride for their shop in their school. They were willing to answer any questions. Many staff knew her son, so she has a freshman here, knew the name. As a mother, this was lovely to see since he has only been in the school for two months, and there are over 1,000 students in this school. The organization of the event just flowed with information at each turn, from the clubs to the products to the students they, they produced. The many, the main lobby with the robotic arm, the boat simulator, the car, the 3D printer, the plumbing display were all so impressive. The brochures information passed out at the beginning, then throughout the campus were colorful, vibrant, and very informative. And lastly, the campus felt safe, the whole time the presence of security guards and SROs. So I was happy to receive that email the next morning, along with other ones, but I probably shouldn't read those here. Middle school tours, they begun, believe it or not, were in November. Newburyport already came through October 30th, if you're interested in the dates. I have them here of when your area's showing up, when your school systems are showing up. Ipswich, River Valley are coming up. Actually, no, they showed up the 4th. Hillview, Triton, Constantino, J.G., Whittier, Gateway, Pawtucket, Georgetown, Nettle, Hunking, and Amesbury will be coming through before break. First quarter is over, and report, report cards will be issued through Power School Friday, November 7th, this Friday. And as Ricky said, we're, our one-act play is Friday at 7:00, 7:00 PM in our auditorium, if anybody's interested. Also, in honor of veterans, and on November 11th, which is a Tuesday, we recognize eight of our staff members who have served in the branch they've served in. Our student government will be part of the morning announcements on Monday morning, because it's Tuesday we celebrate Veterans Day. November 10th, as they, they too, will recognize our veteran staff members. Those staff members' names will be displayed on our outdoor Jumbotron. And Whittier Tech also, if you notice when you drive in, the parade of flags displayed on the school campus, along with the driveway next to Megakitty. That's all set up. That was set up for open house. Also, Mr. Fox, one of our, our teachers here, one of our English tutors who served in the Army, who sent, who was sent to Vietnam, set up the missing man table, which is set up in the corner here, you can see it over there. And that's been there all year in the Poets Inn Restaurant. This table is a symbol used to honor the fallen, missing, or imprisoned military personnel during morning announcements. Mr. Fox will explain the meaning of the table on that countdown. Whittier Tech will also host the breakfast for veterans on this Saturday, November 8th at 9:00 AM in the cafeteria, which is organized by the Whittier Skills USA. Thanks to our culinary staff once again, and students who will prepare a delicious breakfast that morning for the veterans and their guests. And then the rest here, I have Parents Night, November 20th, Booster Club meeting, November 20th, on the 11th, December, that's the Fall Sports Banquet. We also, real important, the school's safety, we're in the process of, hopefully before Mother Nature gets us with the snowstorm, in, in planning an Alice drill for the safety of the children and the staff. Whittier Tech, possibly home games, we have Thursday night, that's tomorrow night, a football game against Somerville, and then winter sports meeting are taking place as, as we speak. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Business Managers Report. Ms. Kosmos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and members of the committee. I have a few things for you this month. First of all is the five-year capital plan. It's in your packet. It serves, as you know, as a planning document, and we update it each year to project the district's capital needs over a five-year period, and we use it in the budget development process. Even though the district is working with MSBA and our regional community members on the Whittier Northern Essex Share Campus Project, there will be some building projects that will need to occur to make sure that the existing facility remains operational over the next several years, and those projects can be found in the Building Maintenance section of this report. The items funded under the metal fabrication area were procured through a state grant, and the district recently applied for a grant in excess of $2 million that will provide funding, if approved, for improvements in equipment in several shop areas, including electrical and plumbing.
All right, let's take that first. Propably first, is there a motion to approve the five-year capital plan?
Motion to approve the five-year capital plan.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, second.
I'll second.
And Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion, questions on it? Mr. Early?
What are we looking for buses down the road?
We try to renew buses every, five buses every year. So we had, but we bought quite a few buses last year, if you remember. So we're looking at both options, lease or purchase, whichever one is, is the most advantageous. And we always leave money in the budget to try to replace our budget, our buses every, every five years. So we have an inventory, and we'll be looking at that again.
You looking at any next year?
Yeah, probably. Probably.
You ever decided whether it's leased or...
It was, it was easier to do the lease at one point, but now it's sometimes easy.
You gotta look at it.
Yeah, you have to look at both of them, because whatever's available and whatever the best prices.
Right, the next thing.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a time we couldn't get some, so, which is why we bought a whole bunch of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. True?
There's a question from, it says on dental radiology training, and it says a trainer, and it's going to wait till '21, 2031?
We just bought another one, that's why. It's every five years you have to renew it. Thank you.
Okay, I just thought they had to wait because we had so many building improvements. Okay, thank you.
No.
Mr. Rossi?
Just got to build any maintenance on the fire suppression?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the, that's not sprinkling?
It is, but that is one of, part of the grant that we wrote for two, over $2 million. We're hoping that we can get some fire suppression in the areas that have fire, just in those areas, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Who else? Mr. Early?
Treatment plan, where are you looking with, where is the money for that?
Some of that will be in the capital assessment every year. We, we have to look and see where our funding is, but that's going to be part of our capital assessment, I'm assuming. We did a lot of the work, we're doing a lot of the work this year, but we've spaced it out. If you look at the plan, it's not as bad going forward.
Who else?
Ms. Coppinger.
Yes.
Mr. Eli.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Paglia.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Slavsky.
Yes.
And the chair.
Yes, passes.
Also in your packet is the variance analysis, which is from July through October. I did it for four months. There's a couple of reasons for that. One of them is, we usually have the credits where people move over in the columns for salaries. The due date is by October 4th, so it gives us a better picture of what the salaries look like. You'll see that there are a lot of overages in most salary accounts, but that's only due to the fact that the negotiations were not finalized until the end of the year, and we had budgeted at a rate that was half a percent lower than what the actual contracts came out to be. So I have prepared a transfer request that will be brought forward at the December meeting, and what that will do is it will balance those accounts, which we really need to do before I start the budget process for FY27, so that the accounts start with the right numbers.
Any questions? Not, continue on.
And finally, in your packet is the FY27 budget calendar, which mirrors what we have done in the past, and it is there for your review and comment.
Sarah.
Motion to approve the FY27 budget calendar.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, second.
Second.
Mr. Slavsky. Any discussion on the budget calendar? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger.
Yes.
Mr. Eli.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Paglia.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Slavsky.
Yes.
And the chair.
Yes, passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is the associate principal, Mrs. Jensen, on MCAS data.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and school committee. I am here tonight to walk you through our MCAS scores and accountability for the spring of 2025. So last November, based on the vote, MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement in the state of Massachusetts. However, we still have to give the MCAS. I just want to make that clear because we are getting a lot of questions of why Whittier has chosen to keep giving the MCAS. We don't have a choice. DE, as he says, we still have to give it. It's just no longer a graduation requirement. The performance levels did stay the same, so we have exceeds, meets, partially meets, and does not meet. So first, we'll go through English. As you can see, we stayed pretty much the same with sixty-two percent getting exceeds and meets, and we did lower the not meeting to only five percent. How does Whittier Tech English results compare to the state? For all students, we were nine percent above. For the economically disadvantaged, we were twenty-three percent above. For high needs, nineteen percent above, and for students with disabilities, twelve percent above. How does the growth, how was the growth from their eighth-grade test to their tenth-grade test? In the exceeds, we had 3.2% more in that category, and then in the did not meet, we had 7.7% of students get out of the failing category by the time they took it in the tenth grade. Next up is math, and once again, you can tell, you can see that the statistics stayed just about the same with fifty percent in exceeds and meets, and the failing is five percent. So where are we compared to the state? Four percent above for all students, sixteen percent above for economically disadvantaged, fifteen percent above for the high needs, and seven percent above for students with Again, for their growth from eighth to tenth grade, in the exceeds, we were able to get four percent more of students into exceeds, and we were able to get 8.2% of students out of the failing category. Biology, which is given in grade nine, we did see a decline in these results, where only fifty percent of students got into exceeds and meets, and four percent failed. But again, compared to the state, we are four percent above for all students, seventeen percent above for economically disadvantaged, fourteen percent above for high needs, and twelve percent above for students with disabilities. So then we get into our accountability, and we demonstrated substantial progress toward our annual accountability targets. We had high growth in English, language arts, and mathematics, and we made progress for students attaining English language proficiency, and I've just noted that this was a new accountability indicator for the spring of twenty-five. So these are the categories, and this is how we did. So our graduation rate was ninety-seven point five, our dropout rate was zero point four. For advanced coursework, we exceeded the target that the Department of Ed gave it to us. Our assessment participation is a hundred percent, and our accountability percentile was seventy-two. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Mr. Early.
What do we want for the not meeting, the five percent, five percent, and four percent?
So usually, we would do an after-school program. We would get those kids back into tutoring because they would take a retest. Actually, they would have started to take it today, but they don't have to do that anymore because all they have to do is take it once. But the junior teachers have, and the sophomore teachers for science, have their results so that they can work on the skills the kids didn't do well in their current class. Because especially for math, it's cumulative, so if they were really struggling with volume, then the junior teacher can work with them on volume in their after-school sessions, before school, or something like that. They can actually assign them IXL, so we have IXL for every student, so they can pick out certain strands and skills and just assign that to them as well, whether it's English, math, or biology.
Any other questions? I just had a quick question relative to biology. There was some decrease, obviously, there. Have we pinpointed what we think the cause of that is, and have we put in plans to...
Yeah, so I met with actually them last week, because I, when I talked to Ms. Lynch, I just said, well, maybe it's the freshmen, because they knew the vote had happened. The vote happened in November, it was June, maybe they just gave up, but actually, that's not true. The Science Department had changed a piece of their curriculum, and they feel that is why the students did not do well. So they are re-implementing and readjusting their curriculum for this year to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Okay. I just wanted to, overall, they were solid, but if there's a decrease, I want to make sure they were identifying the problem and trying to come up with a plan to rectify it.
Absolutely.
Any? Ms. Coppinger.
I just wanted to commend everybody, excuse us, some great scores, some really consistent scores, so, great job.
Thank you.
Who else?
Second up.
Can I just say something?
Yep.
This really shows the hard work of our teachers and how hard they have worked to make sure that the students have the skills that they need. And for many of our kids, they, you know, it's difficult when they come from so many different schools, all to one, and our teachers really do double-time it to make sure that the kids have the skills and have the knowledge that they need to do well on these tests. So I really just want to obviously thank our teachers for their amazing hard work, and obviously, the administration for helping guide that work, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank everyone from top to bottom. I mean, the scores are great. Across the board, our scores are always consistently above state averages, and our students are high-performing, and that's what you look for in any school district. So from the superintendent all the way down to, you know, the principals, the assistant principals, the teachers, the support staff, I want to thank you for a job well done.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the director of pupil personnel, Ms. Morrison, October 1, 2025 school census.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, members of the committee, and Superintendent Lynch. You received in your packet the district's October 1 census report. I have included a comparison of the enrollment data from last year for your information. As of October 1st, we had twelve-hundred-and-eighty-eight students, which is three more than last year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Mr. Early.
Mr. Delaguenis said there's two-hundred-and-fifty signed up, I believe, with more.
Yes, two-seventy-nine. Two-seventy-nine, but as of this afternoon, there were three-hundred-and-fifty-two new applicants for the ninth grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who else? Uh, Mr. Rossi.
When does the window close for applications?
Two-seventy-nine. For the grade nine, it is January 9th.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Slow.
Have the sending schools, the guidance counselors, parents had a lot of questions about the new admission process? Have you fielded lots of calls?
Yes, we have fielded lots of calls and comments, and we had a very nice meeting on Sunday at the open house where there was lots of conversation about that as well. And I think, you know, I think it was wonderful to have them all there and come and to be interested about that and able to answer the questions personally as well.
Who else? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the coordinator of curriculum and staff development, Dr. Fay.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. I'm Dr. Kelly Fay, and I am here to provide you with our annual academic update. As you're going to see throughout this presentation, all of our academic programs are really grounded in career readiness and ensuring that our students are prepared not only for the world of work, but also schooling beyond high school. I like to say that our, one of our former vocational coordinators would always say, "All roads lead to work." So whether they're going to lead to work right out of here, they're going to lead to work right out of college, we're doing everything that we can to prepare students to be prepared for work. Within our English department, we're focused on technical writing and bridging really the gap between English and our CT areas. As you'll see throughout, we are aligning with Skills USA curriculum and integrating writing and communication skills into real-world relevance. Really, what we want our students to be able to do is understand the importance of writing beyond the classroom, and that when writing for authentic purposes, it really is skills that employers are looking for. Within our math program, we're continuing to focus on employability in alignment to the Skills USA. We're assessing not only what students know, but how they work, and really looking at the necessary 21st-century skills. Today's workforce really requires individuals who not only can problem solve, but also could communicate and communicate what they came up with in those problems, being able to adapt to the world, and that's what we're integrating within our mathematics program. For science, we're focused on safety, and we're ensuring that our students can explore and experiment and really learn habits that help them gain confidence while also learning to manage risks and making responsible decisions. And we'll find that throughout our technical areas as well. Within our history department, we have a continued focus on our Skills USA and our American Spirit Award, and the really implementing for our students historical empathy, really helping them to understand from the perspective of persons, whether past or present, and really developing an awareness of integrity and civic-mindedness. And there's a lot of work, especially, it was said multiple times tonight, the history department is also a part of the Veterans Breakfast that is happening this Saturday. Personal financial literacy, as you all know, you approved and voted that in last year, so now it is a requirement for graduation for all grade 12 students. They take it in a half-year course, either the beginning of the school year or the end of the school year, and during that time, students are learning how to manage their money wisely, handling real-world finances, making smart financial decisions, and really gaining financial independence to continue to manage their money. We were lucky enough to obtain a grant, a financial innovation grant through the Office of Economic Empowerment, and we were able just a little over a week ago to run a credit for life fair. We were in this little hub year where we offered it to grade 11 and 12 students, but going forward, our plan is to, well, we just applied this week for another grant, so fingers crossed, we can obtain that for next year. But going forward, we will offer it to our juniors. We had credit counselors or volunteers come in to help work with the fair, and they were positioned throughout the fair to give the students kind of real-world things to think about, and in talking with a lot of those volunteers, they felt like, even in working with them, they really could see themselves having an effect on the juniors, whereas they felt like the seniors didn't need as much help. But the seniors are out on co-op, they're in the personal financial literacy class already, so those are skills that they're already learning. So we feel like having the credit for life fair in the fall, junior year, before they go out on co-op and really start making money makes sense for our students. For our electives, we implemented three new electives this year. Communication skills for college and career readiness, that is a half-year course, and again, as you can see, all of our courses are grounded in our careers. Really, it's writing and speaking skills so that students can learn how to present themselves in the workplace, how to really have those 21st-century skills necessary to be successful. Our other half-year elective is mastering soft skills for the workplace, and this is primarily for our hospitality and culinary students, and that's really working with them or teaching them how to interact with others, communication, feedback, being your attitude, problem-solving, things like that. Our final one is a full year. We used to have it, we brought it back, accounting, and this is primarily for our business and marketing students, and this is really teaching them to understand the financial aspects of running a business, how to manage responsibility, while also knowing the financial piece to be able then to communicate with your stakeholders, whether it's your board or whatever when you're running a business. For staff professional development, we're still continuing to focus on multi-tiered systems of support because we understand the importance of that. We have implemented this year kindness, gratitude, and positivity throughout the school, and that really has been a part of our first few professional developments, so it's been a great, great opportunity to see. And then competency determination work, and that really focuses in on my next slide. So as you know, Katrina Jensen spoke a lot about how the MCAS is no longer in existence, and that was our competency determination. In November 2024, the voters voted to eliminate that as a way to graduate high school, but in May 2025, the Board of Education voted to amend its regulations for competency determination. So according to those regulations, districts have to develop a competency determination policy. So as a team, we have, as first as an administrative team, we really tried to dig deep into the requirements of what the state is saying that we need to have, and how it's going to affect students, and then through our first and really second half-day staff developments, we had the staff really take a look at what they do in their classes, the requirements assigned by the state, and then how they're going to implement that, so that they have a buy-in, so that it's not a top-down approach, but that they're a part of the process. And what the state is saying is that to graduate, the students must fulfill the CD requirement determined by the local school district. So as Superintendent Lynch will probably say to you, we had a policy committee where we brought it, so then it will go to full committee for you all to take a look at and determine if you are in agreement with what was developed. Students also then need to meet the graduation requirements of the school, so you have our school graduation requirement, we have to then meet the competency determination requirement, and then the other requirement, as we do in everything we do, is that students with disabilities have to receive FAP, which is a free and appropriate education, and then we need to submit our policy to the state by December 31st. And that's all that I have for you. Do you have any questions?
What's all this talk I hear?
Um, what's all this talk I hear? On the state level about additional, you know, kind of statewide competency, I don't know if it's competency determination, but it is like evaluating work and even like passing tests and things like that. Is that part of the same animal?
Well, so I think what you're hearing, and I can defer to the superintendent certainly, but there's a governor's council to look at graduation requirements. So that has recently been on the news as the state, from what I have heard, was one of their suggestions was to implement assessments that will be graded by the state, and the feedback is the voters voted no, so why would we do that? This is the competency determination, which was the MCAS. So we've always had MCAS competency determination in our graduation requirement. We just didn't have a piece of it. It was the students took the test, and if they passed the MCAS, they then just had to fulfill our graduation requirements. If a student did not pass the MCAS, they didn't get a high school diploma. Now, we're very lucky that we've had 100% rate for, I don't know, however many.
It's 2007.
So we've never had to, really since 2007, hadn't had to worry about that. So now this is an additional thing that we will, and that's why we wanted the teachers to really be a part of the process, because it's what's happening in their classrooms. And we want it to be standardized. So I can't teach English nine, and then my neighbor teaches English nine, and we're not doing the same thing, we're only hurting kids. So they need to do the same thing because it makes a difference in what happens to the students.
Thank you.
I would say stay tuned.
Yes, that's all.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is reports and recommendations of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. On Thursday, October 2nd, I did my check-in with Dr. Lane Glenn from Northern Essex. We continue to work together to share various perspectives on how we can work together with the building project and how else we can expand opportunities for our kids. On Wednesday, October 8th, we held the municipal leaders' meeting. During that meeting, we discussed the new admissions policy, the allotment of seats by town. We also reviewed a list of questions regarding potential amendments to the regional agreement, which the group had asked me to submit to our attorney for clarification. At the group's request, I drafted a description of what's known as the RAC and its charge. This description was reviewed by our legal counsel and forwarded to all city and town leaders on October 21st. You have a copy of that document in your packet this evening. The group also discussed the possibility of utilizing portions of the previous feasibility study rather than conducting a completely new one. They expressed interest in reaching out to MSBA to obtain clarification on that option. On Thursday, October 9th, I met with Lenny Mira, and I want to thank him for his time and expertise. On Thursday, October 9th, I met with Bob LaPage and Lane Glenn. We discussed various grants and opportunities that we can take advantage of over the next few years and months. On Wednesday, October 15th through the 17th, I attended the New England Association of Superintendents Conference. They had amazing speakers, and it was nice to hear how other states in New England are working through their academic issues. On Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, I met with Havel Acting Police Chief and the Chief Shares from Merrimack along with Chris Leganes. We discussed how we can work together for school safety. On Friday, October 24th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable in Danvers. We took some time to really review the municipal report that was issued recently, and we discussed, you know, the cities and towns and the funding and how difficult funding is going to be over the next few years. On Tuesday, October 28th, I attended the Mass Hire Merrimack Valley Workforce Board Annual Meeting. I want to say that MSBA has approved our school building committee nominees. We hope to have a meeting with our new committee sometime before Thanksgiving. Also, we did submit our online profile projection, Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education Viability Documentation, and our educational profile questionnaire. All three of those documents should now be on our website. Our next requirement is to turn on our maintenance and capital planning information, and we will have a meeting with MSBA regarding our enrollment projections. On Friday, October 23rd, I met with Andy Vargas and other community leaders to discuss the loss of SNAP benefits. It was so nice to know that we have local organizations that are there to help with our most vulnerable residents. I want to thank Skills USA team for working quickly to set up a food drive for open house. It was very successful. We put it out on social media, and when I tell you, people came in with bags and bags of non-perishable items, they did. So it was really a wonderful event and done at short notice. On Sunday, November 2nd, we had our annual open house, which was very well-attended. I have to say, I've never seen it that well-attended. The auditorium was full for Christine and Chris's presentation regarding admissions. I've never seen, it used to be a small little room, and it would be full, but this was, the auditorium was full. And we received so many positive comments about enthusiasm and professionalism of our students and staff, the impressive demonstrations in each of the technical areas, and the outstanding academic, social, and athletic opportunities available for our students here at Whittier Tech. And I said, as of today, we have 299 in district applications, but I guess in the last few hours, it's gone up that much more, so keep them coming. On Monday, November 3rd, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner along with Kara Kosmos and Chris Leganes, and our guest speaker was Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll. I have for you tonight two out-of-state field trips for the ski team. The first one is on January 10th to Pleasant Mountain in Bridgeton, Maine, and it's a ski trip with three shoprooms.
Motion to approve.
Why don't we take them both together?
Motion to approve the Pleasant Mountain trip and Gunstock trip.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Here we go.
Seconded by somebody over there? Okay, Mr. Rossi. I'm shocked you have a question.
We will have all the paperwork for both of those field trips.
Anyway, please call a roll.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger.
Yes.
Ms. Sillai.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Paglia.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski.
Yes.
And the chair.
Yes, passes. Old business, no old business post due. New business, roles and responsibility of the RAC. Open up for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I am, tonight I'm under the impression we've had three selectmen from three different towns express their concerns as far as the school committee representation on the RAC. So is my duty to say that we should definitely follow what they have to say in their opinions on it, because we need all these communities here to be on the same page. We cannot have communities be divided, because if we are divided, this whole process is never going to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Lowell.
Sure. I just, I spent a lot of time reading through the legal advisory that you had gotten and the RAC document at the end of our packet. I just want to be very clear about what I think is the process, and I'll just start by saying I do think it's very important that each member of our regional municipalities, cities, and towns, that they have the voting responsibility as part of the RAC. It seems very clear to me that the subcommittee of this committee is the governing body, quote-unquote, around the function of the group, but that it's really important, and I think I even said at the last meeting, in the initial development of Whittier Tech 50 years ago, it was the members of the community that voted and decided on that regional agreement and that we should honor that, continued. That group is going to be making those recommendations through their discussion and debate of what they think that we as a whole committee will be voting on, and that that gives us the opportunity to adjust or amend, I think is the language that was in that advisory, if we so feel we need to. But in having the membership of the subcommittee, not voting membership, but the membership for communication purposes, I think is vital. And I just want to clarify, from my own understanding, even once we've approved any changes, then it goes to DESI for approval. Then after that, it comes back to us again for final approval, but then it goes back to each of the communities for approval. So those communities all have an opportunity to have a voice and a vote on it, both in the initial discussion of the amendments and then eventually when it's gone around the block and back, and in one door and out the other, they still have to then adopt, I think I'm using the right language, that whatever amendments are made to the regional agreement. So I guess my feeling is they do have the voting strength as a RAC, as the committee, both at the beginning stages in terms of making the recommendations and then in the final stages in terms of adoption, but that it is important that we have membership on that RAC in terms of as the governing body, that it's functioning as a subcommittee of this committee. Am I messing that up in any way, shape, or form? Because I think there's a lot to digest there. I wasn't aware of how many approvals it would have to go through, and that the towns and cities really do have the opportunity, both in the initial stages and in the final stages of creation and adoption.
I just want to build on that, because of the thorough process that we have here, we need everybody involved all the time. And, you know, we obviously have had a, you know, a while, a failure to communicate. I know I'm, you know, the newest member on the board. I certainly come from a perspective that is very sympathetic to what was said tonight, and I shared this, you know, my concerns with this board and, you know, in terms of the school building committee, I was the person who voted against it because I thought the perception was wrong. You know, and again, it's just communications that we got to work through, and, you know, we can't be perfect on it. None of us, there's too many moving pieces to like insist that everything's perfect. But having said that, I mean, last week, the gentleman from Salisbury, I thought we had a great meeting. I was convinced that we should have a non-voting role in the RAC, and I was expecting to come here tonight to vote on that that way. Now, I do see in the thing how it was presented and whatever, I mean, it was still officially that way, we hadn't voted on it, but it certainly was my intent to vote non-voting. And, you know, I won't be on the committee one way or another, I'm on the school building committee, but I want to go to these meetings and I want to ask questions. I don't want to participate, but I want us all to ask questions, you guys to ask questions. And so, you know, but again, we're not going to make it perfect. I'm not thrilled with, you know, I voted no on the school building committee, all right? But that's in the rearview mirror, and it's not perfect, and so we keep going forward. And, you know, in terms of the capital expenses, I mean, that's what the whole RAC is all about, and that's one of the reasons why I'm not on that committee, or won't be part of the four. And, you know, but again, I mean, I think we're, the expense side is what we're doing right now. The capital side is build a school, and regardless of the formulas, the capital is going to get us out of this problem. The problem is not enough seats. And we, you know, can, you know, have concerns about our allocation, and one way or another, we need to have a lottery, and we need to have it this year. It's a mandate, we can't delay it. And I'm from West Newbury, I don't know, I got three seats, all right? I don't consider that like, that's all I got, to be honest with you. I consider that I'm protecting those three seats, because when we have a lottery, we would anticipate that Havel will have a lot more chances of getting more students in Whittier than without having this limit. So I am supporting this limit because I am protecting my seats, and I think that's how we need to look at it until we fix this problem. And we've got to be flexible. None of us are going to be happy, we need to communicate, and I certainly am in favor of non-voting members of the school committee. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Lowell.
I actually think I made this original motion to have four members. I had no idea it was going to cause this level of angst. I think it was actually came from the fact that the Mars folks, when they did a presentation, had recommended that we do that. So it's very interesting to me that, hearing the concerns of the Rowley Select Board Chair, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, that this was not what was agreed to implies to me that the municipal working group had felt like there had been some agreement about them serving as the RAC, which I know we talked about, is that what the intent was? We told that wasn't the intent. The long and short of it, I think our hope is that by having four members of the school committee at the table, we can offer a perspective to the folks that are not on the school committee and also ask questions. I don't think it matters as much, I don't want to speak for the whole group, whether it's voting or non-voting, and if that issue is what is precipitating the angst, then could we solve this by simply clarifying? I actually think it says it already, but in the bullet point, it says four members of the Whittier Tech School Committee, to say four non-voting. Up above it says one voting, so I imply, I thought it was non-voting, but if we just clarify that, that perhaps that might relieve the angst and accomplish the very important objective of transparency and inclusivity, which is why I think we're having this conversation, because there is a lack of transparency. We don't know what they're doing, they don't know what we're doing.
Ms. Coppinger.
Not only that, I just wanted to, from my own understanding and for misconceptions that might have been presented, I don't know how this was presented to the other communities, but in my understanding, it was my understanding that we had not decided whether or not that our representatives were going to be voting members or not. That was something that was going to be discussed tonight before the vote. So we had not, my understanding, that we had not determined whether they would be voting or not.
It was clear as day at the last meeting, we had that discussion with Mr. Colburn, we said, you know.
Right, we had not decided on any of that. That was my understanding.
Anyone else? Mr. Rossi.
Just as a subcommittee of the school committee, they're going to, we will have minutes and agenda items and presented, so I think that it's important that we do have that representation. Non-voting is fine with me as well, but that way you can come back to the committee so we know how the agreement is made or amended, so we're part of that process. So when it does come to us as a package at the end, there aren't 400 questions to it, there might be four. Right. Because we'll be updated, we'll know what's going on as the.
I was, just got in the mail, my if, but, if, or, new, and the headline is, "Whittier Building Committee Faces Sproontme over Transparency." And that's not good. So we have to really be very clear. I also did get an email from my Board of Selectmen, the chairman, asking, "Could you come to a meeting and explain to us what's going on within everything, you know, with the admissions and everything, if they're not, whatever." But we have to be very transparent, or we're not going anywhere. So I'm here for total.
Just on that note, just from my experience in the prior building project, it's a two-way street, and I think it's very, very important, I think it's very important that we have regular updates from this subcommittee on the progress of the RAC, but I think it's also very important on the membership of the RAC, the voting membership, to be communicating back to their bodies and making sure that they're kept up to date so that when those changes are amended, that the general community isn't going, "We didn't know anything about this." I think it's a two-way street, and I said that right from the beginning when there was a lot of angst over communication and transparency. It's, communication is two-way.
We have to work with the press. I mean, it's funny, I said to my husband, "Would you read this article?" And he goes, "You know, the article's not bad." He goes, "What's bad is the headline." The article was pretty clear, something.
My, my, the motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to remove the four school committee representatives on the RAC, but still keep them present at the meetings to answer questions and participate in the discussion.
On the RAC, but not voting.
Non-voting.
Non-voting members.
Yeah. So they would be on part of the committee, but as non-voting.
Well, that's his motion, if he wants to make that as a motion. Doesn't mean everyone has to vote for it, but if that's what he wants.
So the four members from the school committee will be non-voting members who can participate in the discussion.
Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Fitzgerald.
I just want to say I agree with all of you, all the methods. You all mentioned something and transparency. I mean, communication is a two-way street. I work with the federal government. It's terrible. You know? So again, another form of government. It's terrible. It appears that way. I want to thank all the slug people that came out tonight. There's new faces here I haven't seen. And I mean, I'd like to see you here more often. I would like to hear your comments more often. I mean, if we're hearing your comments, we have that feedback. Again, it's a two-way street. We have our meetings monthly. You're always welcome to come and speak your minds. Let us know where you are at, what we might not be doing so well. We can't fix it if we don't know. So, I mean, I think this is something that we have to get done to move forward with a new school for our students. We need a new agreement. That was part of the deal with MSB, I believe, correct?
Yes.
So if we can't get there, we can keep the old school, spend more money fixing it, or we can all come together, work as a team, understand the others' priorities, you know, be willing to, you know, collaborate, and, you know, just come together, you know? And that's what we need to do. I mean, as far as everybody on the board, non-voting, I was assuming, I was, if I'm on the panel, I will be a non-voting member. I do not know about finance. Our position there is to remind the communities, it is about money, yes, but it's also about education. It's also about the students. It's not strictly about the money. So we want to cover that RAC thoroughly. So.
Mr. Early.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody here, myself. I'm the Haverhill representative 25 years. Never seen as many here, but 20 of different towns. Well, the good part is, some of these towns, I don't, did any of you get the October for us increase or decrease?
Probably not.
I'm going to read them. I'm going to read them. In three decreased eight. Georgetown increased six. Groveland increased seven. Haverhill increased 20. Ipswich increased two. Merrimack stayed the same. Newbury stayed the same. Newbury Port decreased nine. Rowley decreased one. Salisbury increased two. West Newbury stayed the same. Joyce decreased two. I was on the committee, the committee when it was set up for the original school that was tonight. We could have done a better job, but we all have to get together. We all have to get on the same page. There is a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of work ahead of us. And I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
I don't have a problem having non-voting members on this, on the R A A C. And the only reason is because it's all coming back to us, and then it's going out to the towns. There's many checks and balances here. So as long as our presence is there, that's, I think, what's really important, so that we can remind the cities and towns about those things that they might not know about Woodyer. You know, you are learning about Woodyer just tonight, and that's great. But it's going to be important to have us there at the table, whether it's one, or two, or three, or four, it doesn't matter. And I don't have any preference in terms of voting or non-voting, because I know I'm going to have a vote later. So, and if things don't look right, it gets sent back to the R A A C, and they look at what our concerns are. So I think I'm going to have a vote, a voice, so I'm not really concerned about voting members versus not voting members. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Can we clarify what the non-voting is? Yes or no? Clarify what it is for non-voting?
Clarify what a non-voting member is?
Yes.
What our vote would be.
Yeah, what our vote is going to be.
So, he made a motion to approve this, and, but in the membership structure, it's four non-voting members of the Woodyer Tech School Committee. So it's this document with four. I think it was written that way anyway. You see above, it says there's one voting representative from each of the 11 cities. It doesn't say four members, doesn't say four voting members, but if people need us to clarify, to put the word "non" in, happy, happy to do that. To be, to be honest, I'm not quite sure where the, how the controversy on this even started. It doesn't make any really logical sense to me. But the consultant originally came, and it wasn't the consultant that we've been dealing with, it was the consultant that the municipal working group has been dealing with. They came, made a presentation. It was their recommendation to put school committee members on that subcommittee. I think it was Mr. Lai that made the motion after they gave a presentation. We had some back and forth on that. So that's how it, how it came about. At the last meeting, we had a discussion, as a matter of fact, it was me that brought it forward about having the school committee as non-voting members. It seemed like everybody here was okay with that. We were going to wait to see what the lawyers said, just to make sure that we did everything appropriately. I thought it was a great discussion. Mike Colburn was here. He engaged in it with us. So I'm not sure how that, which was a public meeting, I don't know how any perception was that they were now, I don't know how that happened. I thought it was pretty clear at, at the meeting that that's what, I mean, we had probably a 20-minute discussion about it, and engaged with, with the, so I'm not sure, quite frankly, how that happened, how that somehow, I think all of us basically said we didn't really care about voting or, or non-voting. To me, what I think is important is, I understand the cities and towns, there's representative of financial interests, political interests. But for me, I wanted to, the only thing that I care about is there's somebody there that's representing the educational interests of the kids in, in this building. That's, and I think that's what the force, school committee members do. And I don't think they need to be voting. I don't think it matters whether they're voting or non-voting. I think they will represent the educational interests of the students of this building to that committee and report back here. So again, I don't know how, what I thought was really kind of already taken care of and not a bigger issue.
I don't know what's going on. I can't explain why, why.
I usually don't allow it, but if you want to.
I, in text, asked a member of the staff that's involved, I don't really want to call them out. I said, did you find out if those additional four are voting members?
Mm-hmm.
They are, with the caveat that none of the four can be from the same communities as each other, so Haverhill can't have two. So that's the information we were given, that they were going to be voting members.
Okay. Yeah, we, we discussed it at the last meeting. I brought it up because I attended the municipal working group meeting, and it was, brought that up to me by numerous communities, and I brought it back to this committee at the last meeting. And alls we were doing was, everybody here, I didn't hear, there was no disagreement on changing from voting to non-voting members here. And that was kind of how we were just waiting to make sure that the legal counsel reviewed it, and that's how, so that's how, I don't know, that's why I was confused how we went from that discussion at the last meeting to that perception.
That's what we were told when we asked.
I think I can clarify a little bit. When, that meeting was before we met with our, or I met with our attorney, and went over the questions that were given to us by the municipal working group. When I worked with the attorney, he was very clear that this group was a subcommittee of this Woodyer Tech School Committee, and that the members of the Woodyer Tech School Committee should be voting members, because it is a subcommittee of theirs. So that's what I brought back to, to that, to the municipal working group at that meeting. At that meeting, there didn't seem to be any issue with that, with that possibility. But it's clear that the school committee here is okay with not being voting members of that. But that's, that was the recommendation that was given to us by, by our school attorney. Because, again, it is a, as he said to me, would you have a subcommittee, would a school committee have a subcommittee that they were not a voting member? And I said, well, probably not. But here we are, and I think what I'm hearing from the school committee today is that they're okay not being a part, being on that subcommittee, or being a voting member of that subcommittee, because eventually, that, that recommendations of the RAC will come to them.
Right. Which is also why we asked for time to have our town council look at it as well, before we enter into this. If there's anything else that we have to clear up.
So, I mean, I think it is, you know, the law's clear. I think it is a subcommittee of the school committee, and, you know, ultimately, it does come back to the school committee. So do I think it's a good idea that there's four school committee? Yeah, because if that doesn't come back, what if it gets voted down? So there needs to be some, some buy-in and some discussion there as well. But again, I don't think it's a huge deal on the, on the voting versus not voting member, or I don't think it's a hill to die on on World War III over that issue. I think there's far bigger issues to be concerned about in this process. Any other discussion? Is he nodding? Call a roll.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger.
Yes.
Mr. Lai.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Paglia.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Slavsky.
Yes.
And the Chair.
Yes, passes. Items not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. There is none. Reports of the special committees, none in executive, none posted for instructional, none for plan ops, none for salary, and none for policy.
Policy meeting actually, the chair's tonight.
You had a meeting tonight, right?
We had a meeting tonight, yes. Policy, we have a meeting tonight, review some policy recommendations from M A S C, and we will have the first reading at the next school.
Thank you. No executive session posted. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I just have a point, a point of personal privilege, I guess.
Absolutely.
For those that aren't aware, I did run for Newbury Port City Council for Ward Six, and I did win that election last night.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that. Not the intent of the announcement. I do feel like it's in the best interest of Newbury Port and this committee and the regional district, if I, if I serve in one role and not two. So I did notify the mayor and the Chair of, the Vice Chair, excuse me, of the Newbury Port School Committee, that I will be stepping down effective December 31st, to give them plenty of time to be able to appoint a replacement. So next meeting will be my last meeting at Woodyer.
Well, congratulations. Best of luck in that new role for you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Fitzgerald, seconded by Ms. Lowell. All in favor of adjournment?